Water.
You know, chopper.
I told that to her. Have emergency.
Yeah, South Pass.
But yeah, that's that. So he's freaking off.
Are they electric or?
Yes.
Must be.
I bet their batteries should be heavy.
But anything.
So I didn't, I didn't look up the specs because then I got excited.
Wouldn't be fun.
No.
Yeah.
There's a deer.
Over there.
All right, how are you guys doing? Good to have you.
Boy is, I should have brought a long shirt. I was in a hurry. What happened up in the hole? Is that a water, water mansion?
Oh.
Yeah, we gotta leave.
It is hard for me to get around.
I like when it didn't tell me. We need this wood, you know, this.
Tried to sneak in and peek down there, boy, they got that.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, see what that is.
Yeah, that's asbestos mitigation.
Yeah.
They gotta keep that release.
I went outside, tried to peek in the windows and they got the, just in case someone opens a window, boy, they got windows all sealed.
They got busy on that project. They got the lockers out of there so fast. All the other stuff since they work out to get ready for mitigation. It's short work.
It's fun to see some of those notes.
We found so much of that stuff, that's just a sample, but.
I think it is hilarious that you guys read back with the names, that's probably what cracked me up.
Those are the stuff.
Just from middle school notes from back in the eighties.
About lockers and stuff. Underneath the lockers, yeah, they saw through the cracks and. Also, they pulled the lockers out and found all that stuff.
Cool. My class. They, they found on the, the ongoing crush was Suzie Venzer had a crush on Roger Hitchens. Ever. And sure enough, they pulled out a note. Some Russian over soon about Roger.
That was classic. Is that the first time around? The first.
Yeah, that was the one.
We're gonna need a shirt, does anybody can be.
Two years later, it's the same.
Right? What's that?
Short one.
Well, Scott won't be here.
Okay.
And he'll be online.
Oh, Taylor will be online too?
Yeah, she just texted.
Okay. So we have plenty of shares.
Then screw it up.
Bring it over. Well, then poor Mara is gonna be like, oh, I herself.
Right?
Goodness. Baby girl. Get extra points for showing up in the summer. Sorry.
Do we get to the point? No. What the hell bonus candy bar thingy? Maybe. Dude, I'm here in summer, I'm gonna grab a candy bar. Now that you mention it. All right, and Karen, anyone?
Okay.
Dagan?
I'm okay.
All right, all right. So what are you doing this summer, buddy? Are you working anywhere or are you playing? What are you doing?
My mom said it's, it's like me.
Okay.
Man, I just spread it so we're not all day.
Gotcha.
They're the hard crunching, I'm gonna get stuff after this.
Are you gonna be doing primary little, what, what in the grassing, selling this draft? School members basketball.
Um, I, we watch, I'm gonna do basketball, so like right at fourth side, so many for an hour and then basketball for now. You want to play for track, right? You got it all.
You guys have any like, team camps or any big classes you're going?
Yeah, we, we went to Powell last weekend. We're about small two. And we're going to UNC.
Our single two kills. I walk all over.
Have you on the mess of this weekend?
Didn't get a single one. You better say it a lot. And they were following me.
Really?
Well, we were off walking off trails, we were just off. Go figure, right? Joe found, Joe did find one of our clothes. Just brushed it off, but one of us found it, I didn't see no dog.
Yeah, I think one took off sometimes. It says we could.
Get out, that's just.
I mean, just to speak. That's okay, that's okay. Last gone.
Make yourself still, oh man. How are you doing?
Good. Well, those, God, who's in most of those? What's that? Is that somebody's emails?
Yeah.
I wouldn't answer that. You, those are yours, but you never check them, say. They all.
I wanted to set an auto responder for my work email, it says like, I don't get paid to respond to my email. You get paid to take people camping. Sure.
How do you get that?
Through C D Marty, yep.
Okay.
What is that?
Taking students camping?
Taking students camping, yeah, going. For the means three times this summer.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. Huh?
Twenty nights.
Yeah, the first ones five nights, the second ones ten or eleven, and the last one's. I think five. Now, the first one might be four. Yeah. Yeah.
In their own gear.
They carry their own gear, their own gear, their own food. Yep.
When I look at that.
And then whatever extra, they always end up out there with the extra stuff and they're like, why did I bring that?
Right.
I have no idea why you brought it. Have been dead electronic, that doesn't work.
Yeah.
No, it's pretty good, I got a good bunch of. So I'm trying to think who Ella Stanberry is on one of the trip. Do you think there are any other? It shows key L V H S. We're gonna pick Gannett. You know Darren Wells? After Ed's question at C W C. I'm gonna go face.
Do you hire the Indian guides or do you go and?
Are, this year we're going through cold springs.
Oh, that's good.
Okay, which I've never done before.
I haven't either, but I hear it saves so much.
Yeah, my knees are very happy already about it. I actually don't mind walking uphill, but walking downhill is.
I have my braces.
Yeah.
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 Got this, this kid that's all, all. Dunko, yeah, twenty, he would. He was trying to figure out how to get. Oh, you know, you're tough, really, as always. First, Judd Rogers has climbed Gannett like nine million times, he's standing there. I don't hold rooms any day.
Oh, that's funny, Jed heard we were going in that way, because I worked with Jed a couple of years ago at C W C, he's like. Wait, you're going in through there now that I'm not working? It's pretty.
It's gonna be quiet in here. I don't think what's the people. Right? We were just, if we were just talking about budgets, we'd have full house.
Yeah. More exciting.
Well, I don't think we're gonna get anywhere anymore people, it's five fifty now.
Same.
Let's go ahead and get things started. Like to call the Fremont County School District Number One War Trust these regular meeting to order. Uh, it is just six o'clock, so we need to hit it just on time. Uh, first order of business is what you believe just.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with the resiliency of justice for all.
Great, thank you all. Board member roll call, uh, Mr. Vincent let me know that he was wanting to be unable to attend tonight, yes, pressing work business. Then I think we have both Eileen and Taylor online, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, great, so. All but one. Uh, are there any additional agenda items?
Um, yes, Mr. Chair, I would love to come back to the climate surveys, I know we're getting a report on them, um. But I left with some questions after last meeting.
Okay, it, would it be enough to discuss it during the, uh?
That works great for me.
Report, okay, it's great. Y'all can hear me, Dana. I don't need to, all right. Uh, any other? There. Okay. Any other agenda items? Okay, here you. None, I'd like to get a motion for the job, adoption of the agenda. So move. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Any opposed? Both of chairs. All right, I need to get a motion to approve the minutes of Mace, wanting to. So move.
Second.
Any discussion on those? All those in favor?
Hi.
You opposed? Chairs. Mr. Harris, recognition.
All right, Mr. Chairman, there's a couple of, of exciting things here as the year wrapped up, of course, we do our teacher of the year nomination process at each of the schools. So I wanted to show teachers who are nominated and chosen by their respective schools, again, P, we have Rachel Roberts. Who's a behavior resource teacher. At all the elementary, Tammy Lynn, teaches fourth grade math and science. At Lander Middle School, Alana Gilbreth, who does seventh grade mathematics. At O V H S Kylie Chatfield, who's a book at teachers, he teaches woods. And then Atwood High School Buddy Redbo are P E teachers, so those five teachers are in the process of, um. Being selected, one will be selected as the district teacher of the year, and then that is district teacher of the year applies as our representative for the state recognition as teacher of the year for the whole state. Uh, so that will wrap up soon. Uh, so all of those applicants are well deserving of their profession, any of them would think find district teacher of the year, uh, the legal process works on district. Uh, so office administrators review their application materials, we've each ranked them independently, and then among the highest score is the one chose as the district. Teacher of the year. Uh. Any questions on that?
No. For those folks.
Yeah. Um, and then the, the second item is the Wyoming Believing in Literacy Together Grant, you have to buy your grant, Wyoming Department of Education. Uh, to improve literacy throughout the district for preschool all the way to high school. Um, and this month marks the wrap up of that grant, by your point, so. We have closed out our grant, but before we leave that topic, I wanted to invite teacher to talk a little bit about the grant's objectives. And how we compare to those areas.
Thank you, thank you, Jared. Ford, I have a forward to show you.
Okay.
This is the Embrace and Literacy Conference, was that last?
Yeah.
I don't remember, I, I just gained a week this month, so it's in my calendar, I'm excited. But I got to share this, um, those of us that received that grant years ago, um. They had this post, a poster up for each of the districts. Uh, and with a gift underneath that I'll share with the guiding coalition, and you can see on here. This is the guiding coalition plus some others, so we've had a strong, solid team the entire time we've had the grants. And it was a celebration for us because some of the districts haven't even started coalitions yet, but thanks to this guiding coalition, our, um. Our work K twelve, pre K twelve has really been solid and strong, and that's very good because literacy is.
Just show them, show them the deal real quickly. I'm sure you can see it and read every word.
Read everything, I'll leave nothing to order because there's a good picture of Mike on it. Um, when he was reading as a frozen character in our family literacy night. But, um. There won't be funds as we know. In the near future for literacy, even with the K three statues and expectations and free K twelve. Expectation for stronger literacy instruction, so this is the team that's going to guide. Us as we continue to move forward, because we're focusing not only on the science of reading, the science of writing. And ultimately, the science of learning with all content, so that's where we're moving, but I wanted to let you know that they asked what we are really celebrating besides scores. And growth with kids. And it is reduction in tier two and tier three intervention needs through strengthened early literacy practices. Establishment of sustainable district literacy and M T S S coalition, which is our group here. To evaluate pre K twelve data and implement actionable items, so each time we meet. And Sarah's come to a couple of those, we also now have it open every other month for community members to come. To hear those actionable items being put into action, into place, development of district wide common knowledge and disciplinary literacy. And, um, that's happening different ways in different schools, so it'll be fun to share that with you. For us. And increasing the number of letters trained staff, which is the science of reading practices. Evidence based, and we have, uh, at this point certified and classified eighty, roughly eighty teachers trained. And I got through the grant, three people in our district trained, and they trained another eighteen. This is last year, so we're gonna continue the training that way, just have to make sure I get funded somehow. Make sure that. Just wanted to celebrate all their hard work.
Well, that was gonna be my question, what impact is losing this, this particular grant will have on this work?
Major. Way, I mean, I'm gonna be honest, it was. Um, it's actually the grant ends for all districts, the end of September. I was one of the initial grant recipients, it's up to twenty eight districts now, because some took smaller chunks, we had almost seven hundred thousand, if I remember. Six something thousand dollars and, um. It, it's put into place, the letters training, it's bought incredibly evidence based resources. It paid stipend after stipend for P D professional development for our staff. The impact is going to be sustaining some of these things that are hard to purchase, like the K three reading program we purchased is at least thirteen thousand a year. For just that one resource. Um. And as the trick then, but if you move to the standard hit smaller, it's because there's nine other contents that budget pays for, so this really supplement. All that work, but this team and new folks and building leaders are very, very dedicated to ensuring that. We keep moving forward. Um, we made some change through a title one, because we lost ninety plus thousand in title one funds, and you, you're aware of that. Um, but our M T S S coordinators will take on big chunks of this work as well.
Were there any F T Ds that were directly supported by that? By this program?
Um, yeah, and they were, but they were up, but they were a year in one school and a year in another, so I had a reading interventionist. Out of this at Baldwin for one year, and then this last year we had an M T S S coordinator at. Middle school, but we have moved her into the title position, she'll do title and M T S S. And that'll be out of title funds this year, so that was one way we could keep that, and that former title one reading teacher went into eighth grade. So that worked out, that is.
Great.
But yeah, most of it was resources and training. But that's the question.
Other questions? Anyone?
I was just gonna have, we, we've had some tremendous results, that first bullet, particularly reducing the need for. Using the need for intervention through higher quality, general budget instruction. Uh, and some data that came my way at the end of the school year class. In kindergarten with phonics, the phonics skills that we have phonics tests and screener that we give to all kids, ninety seven percent of our kindergarten first grade. Show proficiency on that, those are the phonics skills. And then first grade with sight words that are not uncolorable, they don't fit over a nice little pattern, you just have to memorize them. Eighty seven percent of our first graders had proficiency on all of those sight words. So with that foundation, that's gonna pay huge dividends as kids go through the program, or not, not through kindergarten, but through grade levels. In every content area, they can just acquire. Information through reading, it's just gonna be that much easier for them to, to get to the tougher content, I call it work, so. I'm really excited about it, we'll leverage the folks that are letters trained. Um, and the rest members of that coalition are, that's gonna be on them and on Deidre and I and our team to, to carry that board without the grand dollars, but. It's a really high priority, because literacy and language skills are infused in everything that we do. So that's like really key to unlocking performance, whatever content area we're discussing.
And the science behind it is just that we have the word recognition, that the language development and the exposure to. Knowledge, just knowledge in general, it's kind of increase. So just rich, rich classrooms. Rich knowledge experiences. We're gonna get there, we won't quit.
Awesome.
Pretty good.
I had no doubt about that.
Yeah, they're tough group, so they keep me on my toes, so. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
I'll leave this here and.
Chairs? That was all Mr. Chair, okay, thank you. Uh, is there one of public comment, is there any public comment on topics that are not on the agenda? Yeah, sir.
Hi, Sarah Riley, um, I wasn't actually gonna speak until, um, Deidre gave her presentation, and I. Just kind of wanted to say thank you, um, to Deidre and to the district for opening up so much of that for the community, I wish more community members have taken advantage, and I wish it could have come to every. Um, event that was open, um. Because it was really cool to see the things that, that they're doing, uh, working towards literacy and. Um, and just to be a part of that, and honestly, it made me really miss being in the classroom, um, so, uh, just, that's all I wanted to say, was thank you guys so much for doing that. And it was really cool to be a part of that, and thank you, Deidre, for making people feel welcome.
Other comment that's not on the agenda? Okay, is there any public comment on topics that are on the agenda, so I'll note stop. Here, none, we can continue on. Programs, reports, and presentations, board member reports. Karen?
Um, I had the opportunity to, to go to Gannett Peaks last day of school and see their outdoor. Expo, which was great, they did all kinds of like. Science, reading, writing, they did little diagrams, I, I said that one. Diagrams there. Di- diagrams. It was just fun, like, the halls were just decorated and the kids were super excited about it. It's really a fun, a fun to be in the last day of school and then got to see, uh, Leslie Boxland's. Um, presentation for her, the library being dedicated to her, as well as the great songs that the music teachers rewrote. To fit Gannett Peak last day's school, so it was, it was really fun, it's great for you. And then also attended the staff. Lunch on the next day.
Anything else, other board member reports?
Got my hand raised, but I don't know if you can hear me or see me, so I'll just speak up. Um, hi, guys, sorry, I'm not able to be there, um, just wanted to fill you guys in on some things. End of the school year, as Karen said, the banquet or party at, um, Baldwin Creek was really awesome, it was great to go through and see all the ki- things the kids were doing. Um, the recognition of Leslie and all that she's done over the years was amazing. Uh, went to the Baldwin Creek Elementary Awards as well, and that's pretty amazing to see just in all our schools. How many awards and things students are earning, how many minutes, uh, a year students are reading and pages and A R goals, it's just. Really great to see those celebrations, um, graduation was amazing celebration, I was unfortunately not able to go to Pathfinder, but L V H S, I thought it was a wonderful one. And I also want to thank Mike for the presentation for the staff on the last day at Working Day for Staff, I thought that was a really nice way to end the year. With lots of highlights on what is the district has been doing and what specifically our s- teachers have been doing for our students, so kudos to you on that. And then just a quick recap, I was in Powell, Wyoming last week for the State Board of Education Retreat, and. We have a couple of things that, um, have come about, so in twenty nineteen, just a little historical background here. Um, the Attorney General gave a position stating that the State Board of Education hadn't actually identified graduation standards, and that was part of the State Board of Education's roles. And duties, and so. Since that time, we've been re- um, revising and looking at our chapters, so previously, there was a chapter thirty one that had, um, some. Standards, but they weren't necessarily, there were two different things, there was chapter ten, which looked at performance standards, and then chapter thirty one that looked at graduation requirements. So we, um, spent a couple of years now reviewing those and sending them out to curriculum directors and superintendents and principals, looking at those. Things, a lot of changes have been made to look at competency based exams and company. Competency based assessments, and, um, that has now been approved, we looked at, looking at graduation requirements and adding some standards and progressions of learning, so. That now has gone out to promulgation or will be going out, so that will be going out to public input, and so. Um, if anyone from our districts wants to look into that and put input in, it's, you know, your input is valuable, we appreciate stakeholders from the state. Um, and then also, chapter four, um, was previously, which is, um, assessment system, so it was previously lumped in with graduation standards. But the assessments are from K to twelve, so it's not really just graduation, so that's been pulled out. To be just chapter four, and so there's a, you know, new statement of reasoning for that, and again, that will be opened up for public review, so. Those are just some things that are coming out, um, and you know, the State Board of Education is hoping that. With that being going out in the fall and then having time to re- prepare and make any adjustments, they're hoping to have those new, um, graduation standards and requirements implemented for. The ninth grade class going into the twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight school year, so. This has been a long time coming, and it's, it's crazy how long things take to change, but you know, it's a process, and. Um, it seems like that will be a long time away, but I think twenty twenty seven will be here before we know it, so. And that's all I've got.
It's great update, thank you so much for your work on, uh, on that important board of, uh. Any others? Uh, one, one thing, just almost a housekeeping thing I wanted to mention, um. We're having a little bit of trouble with diligent. Software in terms of getting the policies over from the old. Software, so if you're out looking for policies and you need to, need to, you know, whatever, look about research, whatever, they're still on the old board doc system, which we do have access to. Uh, so, at least for the time being. Uh, so at least for the time being, that's where they're at. Hopefully, diligent will get those converted over before we all die or retire, whatever does the president say. Uh, okay.
Um, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna say that I'm glad to be out of school.
Fair, good report. Well, we're glad you're out of school too. All right, Mike Superintendent's report.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chair. So a couple of things, uh, by the way, report that first graduation, of course. Huge culminating event for our students. Um, most of whom have been with us more than just high school. Uh, packed house again in LVHS, backfender as well, so pretty full house as well. And it's just so fun to be at those ceremonies. And I wish you guys could see, I mean, board members, you can see this from the stage, but people in the audience don't often get to see like the kids' faces while you're up there and you're, you're seeing this range of emotions from relations of boredom to tears, you know, it's all over the tear spectrum, absolutely. Um, but it's just so cool to see our kids reach that milestone and then and mark around whatever comes next in their life. So really, really proud of our staff, but mostly really, really proud of our students for achieving that milestone. Um, the second piece of my report tonight has to do with the uh, CKA rules. So CKA is the district's policy on concealed carry for staff. Um, as you guys know, our statute changed in the state here. Um, so we are instead amending our existing uh, rules on concealed carry for employees. So the forty-five day public comment period began on June fourth. I had noticed documents online or in the newspaper. Um, no formal comments have been received that I'm aware of at this point. But there'll be a public hearing next week on the twenty-fourth at six P M. Here in the boardroom and there'll be another opportunity for people to submit comments if they have any thoughts or concerns about um, the proposed rules. Uh, the proposed rules just again were based on what WSBA had drafted in consultation with Scott Vick here, District Attorney. Uh, we made some slight adjustments to that based on feedback from our policies that committee, which is Jared and Eileen. Uh, before those rules went out. So hopefully that, that rule um, reflects our best thinking on the subject while trying to maintain some training requirements, answering some questions about financial responsibilities and instructor qualifications for those who are providing trainings for our staff. I'm just clarifying some of the, the areas where the statute leaves that up to districts to determine. Uh, last piece on that one is that the school boards vote on those amended rules will take place in July, actually on the twenty-ninth of the special board meeting at six o'clock on that Tuesday. So that's on the reminders part of the agenda as well, but I'd like to just mention that real quick as well. Moving on to the last item in our report here, the, the uh, climate survey options and costs and uh, I shared some information for the agenda um, about what Wyoming School Boards Association has to offer regarding climate surveys. Um, got an answer back from them pretty quickly after inquiring at host's last meeting. The basic climate survey for staff only costs thirty-five hundred dollars per WSBA. Uh, there's some add-ons if you want to add parents, if there are any, that's fifteen hundred dollars additional. And then to include students is another fifteen hundred dollars. So looking at at the max sixty-five hundred dollars for that survey. Um, the other thing that's in the packet there on the agenda is an item bank, they, they provided a bunch of suggested items. You can fine tune those, remove that, reword, whatever we'd like to use if this is what we want to do. Uh, but that's, that's in there as well. We're just kind of waiting to hear from us direction as to whether we want to use their survey service or, or go another route. Just wanted to bring that back because that was something that you all had asked me to, to look into from May twentieth. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I had a few questions and comments. And I will own, some of these are maybe on me, but I felt like I left our last meeting not being clear on whether or not we were doing surveys. Um, when they were gonna happen, the who obviously is related to this information you just provided us with. And whether or not they will be anonymous. And so I hope. And then I read the newspaper article and I was like, I don't know if I left with the same, sorry, Austin, impression that Austin did. Um, but I just hope that as a board, we can come together and know exactly what we're doing, moving forward in our next steps. Um. And yeah, so those are my questions. I'm interested in, are we doing them? When are we doing them? Who is doing them? And will they be anonymous or not? Um, so I can, I want to offer a sincere apology to our administrators. I think, in my opinion, our last meeting felt tense. Um, and I hope you know that you are loved by the board. I think you're loved by, certainly you are loved by me. Um, and you probably felt blindsided and attacked and surprised. Um, and I want to clarify that I think feedback is our professional responsibility as a district and currently myself and other members of the board are receiving feedback in informal channels. And so my desire to have surveys for feedback is so that that comes in formal um, system so that we can look at it as a board and discuss it rather than what I hear um, out and about in the community. So I just want to clarify, you are all doing a great job. We want to hear through surveys about the great things you're doing and we also want to identify patterns and trends in how we can improve. And I want that to be in a systematic way rather than what I hear out and about in town. Um. So I want to stay along with that. Um, I do think it is unprofessional that we don't have a district-wide system to give feedback to all supervisors. Um, and I hope that we can improve that. And then I want to clarify that since our last meeting, I have had numerous individuals who work for our schools and um, actually spouses of people who work for our schools reach out and express how important they think it is that there is an option to give anonymous feedback. Um. Let's see, I've just got a long list of things. Um, with regards to your actual update Superintendent Harris, um, I think some of these costs are unnecessary. I don't think we need a student survey at this point in time. I don't think we need a community survey. I could go either way on the staff survey cost. I think it could be a great one-time thing to do and we could learn from their methods. And I really appreciated somewhere in here, they talked about they would give us actionable steps, which was discussed as a concern of what do we do next after the survey? And so I think paying this fee once so that they can role model how we collect data, how we analyze data, and then what the next steps are could be a great move. I think moving forward. I don't think we need to pay this much money every single year for something that we could complete internally. Um, I hope that a survey would become an annual process. And um, that it could be something we do internally in the future, but I think it's worth considering this for the time being. Thank you.
Other discussion on on survey, climate survey?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Taylor.
Hi, thank you. Um, I just kind of pretty much just want to echo Mara's sentiments. I think that um, we dearly adore our staff and especially our administrators, but feedback is important and how, how, how do we know what we need to work on and improve? How do we know why staff are leaving if we're not necessarily getting that collective data from um, surveys and exit surveys? And so I just think that I would encourage us to not always, and I had some conversations with um, some of our administrators after and and try to really um, ease that concern because it's, it's just more or less, we need to know what we need to do better as a district. As a board, as uh, you know, collectively, we're here for our students, um, we're here for our stakeholders. And so um, we can see and perceive things one way, but it doesn't mean that that's how our staff or the community perceives it. Uh, agree with Mara that it's just, it's been consistently something that um, during campaigning and just during my time on the board that staff and parents have brought up. And I agree that all the other surveys with the students and the community are probably unnecessary right now. I'd like to just more or less see um, the staff survey. I do think the uh, um, anonymous piece is important. I do think it's a little costly and I think we could have done this an easier way, but if WSBA can give us some actionable steps and I think if we can take that information and use it, um, as Mara stated, in the future, I don't think we'll necessarily need to use it. Um, I think we're kind of overcomplicating this and um, I, but I understand there's a lot going on too, and so it's better not to rush things, but I really encourage us to um, move forward with this survey.
I think timing is an issue now. We've got staff that has left for the summer. I don't know how my staff members check email or respond to email, do those kinds of things. I would think most. Mara just said she doesn't get paid to check her email. Look, what I heard, man. She, yeah, I'll say that, paper will pick that.
I realize, Mr. Chair, I realize now I'm arguing against myself. Uh, but I do think this is a really important issue and the sooner we can complete a survey, the sooner we can complete a secondary survey and see if we are improving. And so for that reason, the timeliness seems important. If we complete a survey now, we can receive feedback quicker. We can give people time to actually work on it over the next school year. And then maybe this time next year, we can be having a presentation about the growth and the improvement we've seen. And I think summer can actually be a great time for people to fill out a survey because they're not juggling all their teaching responsibilities and they may have time to actually get thoughtful response. If they're checking email. To clarify, I do check my work email, just like doing it in the summer.
We also have social media outlets that we could put on the, our webpage that staff will be getting the survey.
Deidre?
Responding, um, thank you for your insight. You also have the exit survey, correct? So if you put one out by far as saying the summer, also look at the exit survey data. I think that makes me feel better is, like I said before, none of us are afraid of feedback by any means. But the exit survey, separate from those that are coming back and ready to make change, if change needs to happen. I think there's gonna be a lot healthier information. So you have the exit survey for those with some concerns?
Yep.
And then those questions can be asked of those that are
So what do we want to do? How do we want to move forward with this? Do What's that? Everyone's talking about?
Yeah, go for it. So, um, I guess I, I surely understand what a survey does for us, right? And I know I put some comments out there at the last meeting that, that in my opinion are factual. And, and what I've seen over time. And I would just encourage us that if we're gonna put out surveys and try and get information, data and those kind of things, that we actually have to be held accountable to make sure we do something with the information that's collected. Because in the past, the data has been collected. Everybody's taken the surveys and then went straight to the trash can and never got lifted out again. Okay, so if we're gonna do it, if we're gonna do it, if we're gonna spend sixty-five hundred bucks, right? We have to be held accountable for making sure that that stuff is collected, gathered, seen, um, respected, the whole thing. And go through it because if it's not, then we're right back to what I said before, and that's that they do nothing. Okay, so we're responsible for making sure it does do so. That would be my comment if we're gonna do it. So let's do it right.
Mr. Chair?
Eileen?
Um, I agree with you, Mike. Um, and I, I agree with Taylor and, and Mara's comments as well. I really think that we just need to get the ball rolling on something that's systematic and regular. And maybe not as big a deal, you know, if it occurs more frequently and if it occurs every every, you know, season or every, twice a year or whatever. You know, I have never not been in a job where I didn't sit down at least once a year with my supervisor face to face and have that ability to both write and talk about feedback. And this is where it seems like the gap of the non-existent human resources, um, person or department um, comes to haunt us a little bit. And I don't want to make the conversation bigger than it is. Uh, but we really need to have some way to make this a very regular and, as you say, Mike, usable form of data. Uh, but we've got to start somewhere. So you know, I think throwing our um, chip in the bucket with WSBA as you know, Taylor and Mara said, to get things started and to get a sense of you know, how we can roll it out might be a good thing. And then committing to doing it every year.
I was just gonna agree with, but everybody had to say except for, I don't think we need to do the, the community and student survey at this point. I think the staff is more important right now. And if we decide we want to have that later, we can, but um, I think getting the ball rolling on this now so that we can get it out there and then I like the next steps, then it would hopefully help us plan what we're gonna do and when, when we'll do it again. How we'll use information like I said.
When is our normal board meeting in July?
Mr. Chair, the fifteenth of July.
Okay, so it is the regular, I, I, I was looking at budget here. Never mind, yeah, that's So I mean, at this point, we would probably not be able to do something for the fifteenth of July. Mike, what, I mean, I'm kind of, I'm, I'm adrift in the wind a little bit about where to go from here and how to make this happen. Do we want to? How do you want to proceed? Do we want to all submit questions to Mike and then have Mike put it together? Um, do we want to just trust Mike to put one together or, you know, we can approve it on July fifteenth? Uh, or present it to us? If we can either add to it, subtract to it, whatever, on July fifteenth and then get it pushed out shortly thereafter? What's, what's your guys' thoughts?
I think the biggest question I see right now is whether we're doing this internally or whether we're choosing to use the WSBA. Is the first question and they have great questions that they recommend. I don't even know if we need to, I guess my pitch for the WSBA is that they do all the work for us. They have great questions at all. And I think that would yes, we have to pay for it, but it would take all the work of figuring out what do we ask? How do we administrate it? All that stuff would be taken care of. And I think we can watch, I guess my suggestion would be we watch that roll out and we take notes and we just repeat it ourselves in future years.
My only concern with using WSBA is the last time we did it with WSBA, the quality of the questions, in my opinion, were pretty poor. Uh, so if we do that, I think we'd want to vet those questions and make sure that we're all comfortable with what we're actually asking. So maybe, what, what would you guys think about having Mike put together a WSBA uh, survey and having us take a look at it on the fifteenth? And if we're good with it, we can do it that way. The, the nice thing about that is if we are talking about anonymous surveys, they do a really, really good job about keeping things uh, strictly anonymous. Um, if we do it the other way, uh, usually it's the board chair that will take the feedback and then, uh, you know, I, I mean, I, I, I know that I wouldn't keep it confidential, but there might be some trust issues out there. I understand that. Um, so I, this is a good way to go, probably, especially for us. Um, the first one, quote unquote, although it's not the first one, so.
Mr. Chair, pretty bad suggestion.
Absolutely.
I know you talked about doing it soon. My concern on that is just from experience, over the summer, the communication drops off a bit. So we have staff that are all over, you know, some are working on ranches that have no connection. They're on vacations. If you're gonna commit to it and you want accurate results, excuse me. I would suggest, I, as an admin team, we thought October would be a good time and some of the reasons for that is that we have new staff that want to, right? So if you were to send a survey out now, you would not get the staff that have left. You have exit surveys with my students, you know, it's a my name, but it's not gonna go into the survey and it's not gonna you know, it's not gonna collect the data like you want to see it. So uh, just from experience, usually when I'm sending stuff out in the summer, I'm not getting a hundred percent. And that's okay because it's summer and they're taking the time off, they're reflecting, they're refreshing for the summer. So you could do it and you might get some of the responses back. We could use that as well, but if you're gonna spend money on it, if you go that route, I don't think you're gonna get the best your buck. Why October? I think it gives us time to get settled in and gives the staff the perspective that I think you're looking for, especially new staff. And I think, let's see, about two months should give them a pretty accurate idea of how they're feeling at that point. So just my suggestion, you could So just my suggestion, you could do it a lot, but uh, it'll be if you send it out in the summer and get the responses. Thanks, Mr. Moore.
Mr. Chairman, maybe one of the things to think about on on when to give those surveys. Um, historically, we've given them like the last day of school and some of those things right in the school year kind of a gig. And I don't know if that was maybe, maybe not the best time or place to do that at. But what what about if sometime during the during the year when we have different workdays? And we have our schedules that work that into part of the the assigned duties for the day is to complete your, complete the survey, survey. And and maybe we could do it multiple different times with the same one during the school year and see if people.
Yeah, I know, you know, in the past, we would do these surveys with the intent of having them repeated. But they always stopped at one, right? So N equals one, which is. So it really gives statistically significant results, so.
Can do it, do it right.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with that. But that is, that does make it more important, I think, that we get the questions right upfront. Because if we want to repeat them, then we need to make sure that they can communicate because change of midstream start to degrade the quality of the time, so. So do we want to start this next fall? Is that the thought? Start it in October? Yeah.
I won't interrupt again, I promise. I do agree with Mike on that because I run those vertical P D days and we survey those days each time we do that. We can add the questions to that and you know, we have a P D day in October, we have one in January, so. And then you have the exit of the year, there's three chances for feedback.
Great, excellent.
Just to say, if we're being intentional, then let's get the questions going now and then we can, we can decide on dates. After we, now everybody has time to review it. As that, then we can even put it on our calendar. When we do our calendars, we have the P D days that are on there and we can say survey ones or two in the year and we put that into our account.
You good at that? Okay, thumbs up, thumbs up for you. That's a good thing. Okay, is that work? So Mike, can we get on the fifteenth, the start of our questions?
And then we'll also, absolutely, I I just would appreciate it to you now, the next meeting, if you have specific items that aren't reflected in the W S B A items, to send them to me. Technically, I'll waste your time just repeating it here and whatever's in my head. There's something I want to see, just just let me.
Sounds good. All right, thank you. I think that's it on the, oh, then you're superintendent, we're still on superintendent's report.
Mr. Chair, I'm done.
Uh, just shout out, I do get a chance to do this. Taylor, thank you for taking over for my duties on the graduation. Know the paper that way, but thank you anyway. All right, so we can move into, uh, we have a uh, second session. Hopefully it won't be uh, too long. Eileen and Taylor, I'll give you a call. Oh, can I get a message motion to do that?
Someone second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
I.
Bye. Any votes, votes from Terrence? Thank you.
That stuff right there.
Oh.
Who told it for me? There's like a couple thousand people out there who took away my crusade.
Bro. Oh.
Almost.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm over them. Okay. The little coffee. They're not. But. Fashion work for your.
Second tourist scored by bite. Antique xylophone still is the show. Yeah, and we use some good stuff up here.
So when we're someone so back in life after all this. Trying to set the show. I can't.
Intuitively scare at me. All that. It's like that.
What's that? That gristle very good, careful.
Indeed. Yeah.
Mm hmm.
Well, we have a story.
I guess that's already on the line. Yeah.
Like to get a motion to. Bring the. Board of trustees back into work.
Still. Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Hi.
New approach. Motion carrier. All right, we have a. Couple action items here. Need to get a motion for the approval of the personnel actions list.
I'm a.
Split.
The. We're just working on A one right now, not A two.
Okay.
So just the personnel action list.
The two lists, so can we split the two lists?
We will.
So.
Okay. Second. Second. All right, all those in favor of A one. Superfide by saying hi. Hi.
Hi.
What?
Hi.
Okay. Any opposed?
I can see this.
Uh, no one is opposed.
Okay.
All right, motion carries, and I'd like to get a motion to table A two. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
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 Any opposed? Motion carriers. We have a salary correction that we need to make that was missed. When we did the. Original steps, so like to give a mo- a motion for the approval of the salary cor- correction as percentage.
So.
So move.
Second.
At a second. Any discussion on this? All those in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Motion carriers. Okay. Need to get a motion for the request for use of depreciation reserve account funds. Uh, to purchase lunch tables at our middle school. On what?
Is there a second? Second.
Let the record show that. Uh, Mr. Morgan is on his knees begging for this at this point. Any, any discussion on this, Mike or Mr. Morton?
I can share something I've observed about these tables. So that right now, current tables have chairs that are required to be put out and taken. Put away, put out, put away, put out. So we put it. Three grade levels, breakfast and lunch. That's an awful lot of moving and cleaning. Um, and actually we're giving away some of the commons area. Not to mention just, it's a little more chaotic, but furniture moving around. Mr. Morton, do you have additional insight into that?
In the area.
Oh.
Four years of lunch duty.
Understood.
Yeah. Oh. Mr. Chair, above everything, it's pretty hard to see Mr. Maori. Putting those away each day, and there were stretches where he was still even on duty. So you're looking at about a hundred and thirty chairs. Day. Uh, sometimes we do them before I already create. Uh, sanctions. Uh, and actually, it was a weird first effect. They loved it. We sell. Uh, but for him, that's a lot of work. They wax the floors every year. Uh, it looks terrible, but in the school year, it's straight over. The table are getting harder, uh, than the original table chairs of the school building. And so the mechanics of the tables are a big part of the members to actually. Go back together each day. So. Obviously wearing that sound is ridiculous and. Uh. Just. I figured it would probably take an hour of work each day with one unit where it all folds up together. Students or adults, the adults, it doesn't matter, people, chairs and tables. Uh. Just holds up. One thing is there's no stacking chairs. There's no raising down the concrete floor. Today, yeah, they're just clearing out. So. That's adding to the time that has with the tables. So it's not a smooth process. So, um. You're humbly, humbly asking. For just to say it's. In past words, and I think for us, a changer for us. So. Little things like that help a lot.
Great, thank you. Um, note that it is the, the cost of this is forty nine thousand. Four hundred and eighty three ninety four. It would come out of our depreciation with funding, uh, reserve account. And currently there's a balance in that account approximately two point seven million. So it's a. Fairly small in question. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Motion carriers.
Thank you.
Carol, I'll let you know if there's any.
Thanks.
You both. All right, and then. We have a request for the approval of out state travel reimbursement. Want to get this? Yours? So to get it on the, on the table, I wanted, I need to get a motion for the approval of the reimbursement for out state travel. So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Taylor.
Hi, sorry, thank you. I have, um, a couple of questions about this. I, um, trying to recall from my time on the board. I. Don't think we've ever approved anything like this before, and so I just was trying to get some clarification if this is common, um, if there is a policy on this. Um, you know, a lot of times I see students before and you know, if it was asked beforehand, if this was an option instead of a post. Um, post event request, um. You know, are these kind of things chatted with the families about? If we could just talk about this a little bit more, I'm, I'm kind of struggling. On, on understanding why this has been brought to us.
Do you want to give a quick overview? You bet, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, we do have a policy on the books. It's policy J Q that deals with out of state. Our out of season activity requests. There's a stipulation in there where, uh. The board can be approached for expenses for national travel, so the board can approve those expenses. This instance is a little bit unique. We used to have a lot of kids competing in the state history day competition. Um, and this year far fewer and two that made the finals and actually won the event. Uh, so they were, uh. Able to go to national. History day. Um, due to the timing and change in sponsorship and it's some confusion at the end of the year. That request didn't come to us before the previous, before the travel, which was the ninth through the twelfth of this month. Um, so they're relying on that stipulation and the policy to request reimbursement for harsh part of the expenses that these two students. Um, incurred in traveling to National History Day. In the past, the district would cover that sort of thing through fundraising. So with so few students participating, there hasn't been a big LMS history day drive to raise funds. Um, parents were under the understanding that there was some remaining funds in a previous fundraising account for National History Day, and that is not the case. After checking with Mr. Sweeney, there is no. A special activity fund that was thanks to a car wash or any other form of fundraising. So.
Okay.
Um. Oh. Sorry. I'm a little distracted there. Taylor went dark on the screen.
Yeah, Taylor, uh, Taylor's on the line. Uh, the power just went out in the motel that she said.
But yeah, we're in an Airbnb, but apparently it's big lighting and sunburner and the power just went out. So.
Okay.
Sorry.
If, if you hear sirens, head for the basement.
Yeah, no kidding.
I guess, uh, just, just to sum up on that, so the, the, the total costs are on the attachment there in the board packet, a little over three thousand per student A and. A little over four thousand per student B. They flew out of different airports and. Had other arrangements on the ground and things, so that there was a difference. The two parents are just requesting a thousand dollars each, so a total of two thousand to the district. To offset those out of pocket costs. They're not asking for the full amount. They're just asking if the district would. Under policy JP considering, uh, reimbursing them for a thousand dollars each.
Um, what kind of? What kind of presence, this is set, are you, are you concerned with the presence the script said about? Getting flooded with reimburseals for travel?
Um, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I guess that's a possibility. You know, I guess if you, if you are. Driven enough to voluntarily create a project for state way competition and win that competition. And then go represent your school and your community at the national level. Um, I think that's great. We can always support that. And nor could we support every request or a full amount of requests, but I think these parents. Are attempting to be reasonable and asking for a fraction of what they spent to get out there. And accompany their own children to these events rather than having a staff member of. School district go with them. Um, we don't see a whole lot of national events like this that students are qualified for, so I don't. I don't think we'll be overwhelmed, but isn't it unexpected expense from time to time? It could be.
So are you recommending approval?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I would recommend approval. Both of these, uh, students presented to the board in honor at our May twentieth meeting. Uh, their project was not only the state champion, it was a winner of a pretty prestigious award at the state level. I haven't heard yet how they did at the national level. It was just, they just got home about four days ago, but. I would be in favor of approving this. This request.
Other discussion on this?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would just throw out there that I had a daughter who went to National History Day a couple of times and. This was during the. Time where Gayla Hammer actually was there as a chaperone. They stayed at the University of Maryland in the dorms, so lodging was very inexpensive. They ate their meals in the dining hall. Um, she arranged public transportation to get them to and from Washington DC. Um, and the kids did do some fundraising and families contributed, you know, what they could. Um, but I think it's a very different situation. Um, today, because obviously, you know, a parent needs to accompany their student and. We know that lodging and transportation are not, um. Unless you're at the University of Maryland, they're not that inexpensive. So, um, this seems like a really reasonable thing. And a, a great way for us to continue to show our support to these students who are doing such, um, amazing work.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of, uh, the reimbursement, say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Uh, any opposed? Motion, okay, uh, Taylor is opposed. Motion carries. All right, I need to get. There's going to be one extra action item that is not on the agenda. Uh. This is a. Uh, personnel issue, so I will refer to the person that involves individual A. I need to get a motion for the acceptance. Of the request for waiver of damages according to policy GCQC. Kind of get a motion for that. So move. Any discussion on this? All right. Um. All those that want to approve the waiver of damages, say hi. Um, all those who do not want to approve waiver of damages signify the same. All right. Or from motions denied. Okay, discussion items, posters review. We have first reading of several pol- not several, four policies. Uh. The first one was policy J I C H A R drug test for students involved in. Door activities. Mr. Here's.
Mr. Chair and members of the board, so if you recall from the twenty eighth meeting that, um, there was a, a one pager with a kind of a year review for the drug testing policy. Uh, that included some possible recommendations from the team and myself. This draft is crafted based on that discussion for May twentieth. A couple of highlights here, first under the activity programs on the first page. This proposal would eliminate sixth grader from the testing. Uh, protocol and keep seventh and eighth grade. There was discussion last month about whether middle school at all should be involved, and if so, which grades? Uh, so this is sort of a compromise on that, on that phone. Uh, then down on. Bottom of page two. This proposal would eliminate the initial one hundred percent screening, every activity, every athlete, every participant. In favor of just keeping the random screening. Um. And as, as stipulated in the original policy, twenty five percent in season and then ten percent outside of season. So those percentages are not proposed to change, but the, just the one hundred percent screening would be, uh, eliminated with this draft. And then the last piece down below on page four is to, uh, align this policy with the code of conduct. In holding that if a student is appealing a positive test result, they would be ineligible to participate while the appeal was on court. So that's what the code of conduct already states. This is just to make those two, um, in, in agreement.
Have a quick question. Is that ineligible to participate in? This as well?
Uh, Mr. Mr. Chairman, I have to look and see what the code of conduct says. I think the code of conduct stipulates that you can participate in practice, but not contests.
Could we, uh, for reading two, could we make that more clear somewhat, personal? Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Chair, thank you. Other discussion on this? Well.
Um, yeah, I have a question. How much? I know funds were allocated for drug testing in the draft of the original budget. How? Do we know how much was, um? Can't say how much was allocated for testing and how much eliminating the hundred percent started season testing would save?
Uh, Mr. Chair, this guy, I don't have the specific figures on how much that component was, but that was the bulk of the. The expenditures, because we had five activity seasons and three in the high school, so. Totally the activity seasons and then. As far as the participation surveys, we did have. Way more students participating this year than prior, the previous year, so that drove the cost too. It's just kind of, uh, hard to pin down. I, I'd have to. Double check with Mr. Sweeney to find out exactly how much he's got allocated for drug testing coming here. But I do have those participation numbers. That was something, uh, that Mr. Jensen had requested. And I can share those.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so for twenty four, twenty five, at the middle school level. In non athletic activities, there was a net gain of twenty one, twenty nine students over the previous year. Only two areas had decreases, most had gains. Um, and then on the athletic side of things, at, at, at the middle school level, the net gain of twenty four participants. And only four of those sports had a decline. Of course, from twenty three, twenty four to twenty four, twenty five. At the high school level. Non athletic activities, there was a gain of fifty eight students in terms of participation. And only five of those, you know, there's. Over, there's probably close to twenty at different activities, only five of those saw a decline year over year. Um, and then in terms of athletics, net gain of thirty one participants and all the three sports had a decline, and those were minimal declines, only two students of one sport, four of another, one and another. So overall, this doesn't seem to affect participation. In fact, you can say that there's correlation that may improve.
How, how did that? Um. Try to think about how that. Relates to the total number of athletes or total number of potential participants. Basically, since, since it's one year, we're only talking about one class dropping off or one class being eligible, so it doesn't seem like the, the eligibility would have changed.
Mr. Chair, no, I don't think the eligibility would have changed in the enrollment at LBHS was fairly stable. Year over year. LMS saw slight decrease in studies, but those games I think are still meaningful.
Thank you. Mark.
Mr. Chair Superintendent, um, I just want to say I am in full support of the removal of the hundred percent testing. I think that is a great way to save money and a great way to keep. Students in classes and will make it way more logistically easy, um, and that the random testing still provides a strong incentive to not use drugs. Um. I'm not a fan of the seventh and eighth grader testing, but I can live with that compromise. Um, and then I would finally encourage us to think more holistically about how we reduce drug use and see if we can. Reallocate some of the money. Um, for drug testing towards activities that will engage students in meaningful extracurricular activities so that they develop hobbies outside of drug use. Um, and I know we've received several. Petitions for those over the. Course of the year, and so that might, potentially that's an item for discussion in the future of what can, what can we use the money for that will reduce drug use and. Enhance our schools.
Great, thanks. Other discussion on this topic? Taylor's a vampire up there. She's sitting in the dark at this point.
Crazy, so loud and yeah, it's insane. I luckily logged in on my phone internet and I've got phones, so. Um, yeah, I think that sounds like a great compromise and I'd like us to proceed that way as well. Um, thank you. Got a flashlight for my kid. Okay, bye. Um, and yes, I agree, um, you know, I think dropping off the sixth grade, especially because. Um, and yes, I agree, um, you know, I think dropping off the sixth grade, especially because most of our sixth graders are doing individual sports. They can't, or all, they can't do team sports, um, it just. It, it just makes sense to just look at, um. Discluding them and yeah, I think this.
Great, great. Thank you.
I have one quick question for Mike. I remember there being. Um, some kind of complaint possibly from a parent about. Um, removal from. The random testing list. To, am I thinking of the right thing here? There had been a complaint. Um, I'm trying to find the item.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Drew, I think here, there was a, a, a comment from. Our former AD about that. There were two parts of this policy that were at odds and I, I didn't get on it when I did my quick overview. But I think we got that straightened out. Let me just look here to see what was crossed out.
Okay, no, it must have been something else because I know that, I know there was the. Question about bringing it into alignment with the student code of conduct. But I thought there was a parental question about removal of a student. From the random testing list, but this item E looks pretty clear, so. I must be mistaken. Thank you.
No, I don't think you're mistaken. I, I remember, I remember that I made something about, um, I, I think it was a. Had something to do with being removed when you're not in playing in season. Um, but I don't remember the context at this point.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Drew, I, I can't remember the context either exactly. I have to go back and review that in minutes.
Okay. Well, might be something to review for second reading. Okay, uh, let's move on to policy INJ first reading. This is our homeschool policy. We've made some changes that I believe are driven by. State statute, I think. But we'll, uh, let Mike take it away on this.
Uh, Mr. Chair, yes, thank you. This, this policy is, uh, being revised, it was just revised last year, so. May look familiar, but we've had some important changes at the state level and that's the reason for this revision. Um, INJ basically now says that it eliminates the part of the policy that used to be talking about. Homeschool parents producing evidence of what curriculum they're using and giving that to the school district. That was expressly removed from state statute, so that whole part has been scratched. Um. And there's some new language there that, that also matches up with that, that state statute. Saying that we don't, but this old language is we don't have any. Right to require or, or make judgment about a homeschool curriculum.
And at the end of the day, we were. Even if a parent came to us and we did not feel as a district that the curriculum was up, up to our standards. There was nothing we could really do about that. Is that correct? So I mean, this almost brings. Reality and, uh, aligns policy with reality. Is that fair to say?
Sure, that's, that's fair.
Any other discussion on? This item, Ily?
Yeah, one quick little thing, which is more of just a grammatical. Thing in that second paragraph, the highlighted, um, portion of the sentence. Um, it shall be the responsibility of every person administering a home-based educational program. To ensure the curriculum meets those, uh, these requirements and is provide to students in the program. Hmm, is provided to students in the program or is provided for students in the program?
Mr. Chair, Ms. Drew, I added D to the word provided. It's on board docs. I just had already uploaded the policy before I caught that, but yeah, I should say provided.
Great, thank you. I like that D.
All right, any other discussion on this one? Our policy GCBA certified salary schedules. Mike, want to? Jump in on this one?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, uh, policy GCBA is our certified salary schedules for, for teachers. Um, previously you'll see on the draft, we did not have any credit given to any, any teaching. Uh, person in a teaching position if they had, uh. Prior experience that was not teaching related, so. In the case of CTE teachers. They could be a master mechanic. Or, you know, world-class welder or a craftsman and carpenter. And come and want to teach school and be involved with PTSD toward certification, but. The previous version of this policy gave no credit to those individuals for any sort of relevant work experience. Um, after talking with a couple of board members and, and, and LBHS and, and, uh, our business manager. The proposal here on this draft will be to grant up to ten years of credit on the schedule. For each year of relevant non-teaching work experience, so one-to-one ratio up to ten years. For experience beyond ten years, the credit on the schedule would be granted at a two-to-one ratio. So. Uh, we can't probably sustain a one-to-one, but Mr. Sweeney was comfortable with this ratio, these ratios. And I think it would be a way to help ensure that we can recruit and retain talented CTE people who are interested to become teachers.
Any discussion on this? Needs to make a lot of sense to me. Are there restrictions, something similar?
Um, Mr. Chair, members of the board, so we inquired, Carol made a call over to Fremont twenty four and she's showing you they have a little different setup. Every district is doing something a little bit different to try to. Get qualified people who have actual work experience in these fields and are willing to work with young people. Um, I didn't find any district policy that had this exact type of thing, you know, with these ratios, things like that. Um, but I know everybody's struggling with recruiting and retaining these folks because they. They generally make a lot less than they could in the open market. Um, so it's, it's hard to reel them in and hardly perfect end of the state.
Well, it's the edge on some of these. Taylor?
Sir Chair, um, I'm really excited to see us have this at the state level, the Career and Tech Ed Board, that's. We're trying to push and it's being seen more across the state, um, as Mike said, with recruitment being so difficult, um. And a lot of people are maybe at the end of their business career and they'd like to get into education and maybe helping and, um. Teaching on that aspect, but financially it just doesn't make sense for them. And so especially for these rural districts. This is something that they're going towards and it's kind of a push throughout the state, so. I think this is great for us and it'll look really great for some of those recruitments and it's not. A huge pool of teachers that we're discussing, you know, it's just more of those trades. And a little bit more of those unique positions, so. I think it would be not sustainable if we were talking about, you know, a larger pool of. Staff that that would be, um, applying to, so that's my thought.
Great. Other discussion on this side? Okay, let's move on to polit- policy EJ sex designated facilities. Uh, another one that's driven by one of the state statutes. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, so this is coming to us via the Wyoming School Board Association. This is a verbatim. Model policy from their policy service. This is based on the new state statute, uh, which is enrolled Act fifty-three. Uh, designating exclusive sex-specific facility, facilities for restaurants, changing rooms, sleeping quarters. Um, the policy does include some reasonable accommodations for those, uh, who. Don't identify with either of the, uh, sex-specific definitions in the policy and in the statute. Uh, there are some exceptions for custodial staff, emergency responders, uh, coaches, but under certain conditions only. Uh, so this is very much reflective of the policy or the state statute. Um, and districts don't really get a whole lot of the latitude to go with these, but. All of us need to have a policy in place before the next school year, so that's the reason for bringing today the first meeting.
Thanks, discussion? Mark?
Mr. Chair Superintendent Harris, um, I want to first acknowledge that my duties followed a lot and Wyoming statute is pretty clear on this issue. Um, but I also want to acknowledge that not all students fit neatly into the categories described in this legislation. There are students who identify with a gender that may not match their anatomical sex. Uh, there are students who may legally. Have changed their sex. Uh, there are also students who are born intersex and who may have. Atypical presentation of their body parts that do not match the chromosomes of their sex, and so. I want us to remember that this is, well, the categories in the legislation are really. Neat and specific, not everyone fits in those categories and. Our district and our teachers and our staff and our coaches still carry that burden of supporting those students, and so I hope we move forward. Thoughtfully and with love and with consideration of the needs they may have in terms of. Additional support. Um, I do appreciate the language in here about reasonable accommodations and I hope we remember. That that includes not just a different room or a different bathroom, but that may include mental health counseling. Or. Having conversations with other members of a sports team. So that these students feel like they belong as all students belong in our schools, um, so I hope we move forward with love on that.
Great, thanks. Other convers- other, uh, discussion on this one?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Um, you know, we have transgender and non-binary and gender questioning students in our school district. And we know they're here with us. And the words of this state statute don't erase them or negate their needs and rights and well-being. I think it's really important that we remember that. Research shows that a student's inability to easily use the bathroom that corresponds to their gender identity. Has actually increased in schools and areas across the country. Um, incidents of verbal, sexual and physical harassment. And in light of this knowledge, we as individuals and educators, administrators. And school leadership teams. Must commit to going beyond the wording of reasonable accommodation. For our transgender, non-binary and gender questioning students. To ensure their well-being and their safety in our schools as we implement these policies. Thanks.
Thanks, Ollie. Any other discussion?
I would just like to say that I agree with Mara and I think. I mean that we move forward with respect for students and, um. That I hope we keep that as our focus. As well as the question, I mean, I don't know who's going to man this exactly, like. How is that really going to be? You know, I hope it's done in a respectful way if somebody's concerned about somebody's gender because. There's been assaults happening for. Females who look a little bit more masculine and. Bit more feminine, they're getting. Attacked and getting like, I think you said they're getting attacked and harassed and they go and choose the. Bathroom that is their gender. So I'm hoping we continue to be respectful, specifically in our public bathroom, in our. Square. Square wall where we have people from all over the community that are using it, so I'm hoping that. We continue to be respectful and thoughtful. With this.
Great, thanks. Taylor, Mike? Mike shakes his head. Taylor?
Um, Mr. Chair, I think. Those were valid points and I think, you know, again, following the letter of the law, I don't have anything else to add on these, so appreciate. The, um, input from everybody.
I, one, one thing that I mentioned, just this is a little bit broader. But, uh, two years ago, we went and we were talking about transgender policy, um, that I had brought forward, I think it was two years ago. Um, I'm. Happy that at this point, I think on almost all the issues have been addressed. I don't think we any longer need to, to have such a policy. Um. Disenroll Act, Wyoming State twenty-one, three, one, thirty-seven takes care of the bathroom accommodations for the safety of. Primarily safety of, uh, my minor female students, so I'm thrilled with that. Our pronouns. Issues have been addressed with enrolled Act twenty-three, Wyoming State nine, fourteen, six, oh, one. Which specifically addresses adults, but. As students generally have more flexibility and first amendment rights than teaching staff. Uh, I think this pretty well covers students, uh, as well. Sports was addressed via enrolled Act ninety-two, Wyoming State twenty-one, twenty-five, one, oh, two. So we no longer have to, um, worry about the safety of our, our girls in, in competitive sports, um. Where they're playing against males. Rental rights notification was addressed with, with SF nine. And policy KBB. Even though I think. That transgender issues are not explicitly called out, um, in that policy. I certainly sound, think that issues around surrounding gender dysphoria constitutes mental health conditions. And qualifies under KBB. And then IMV teaching controversial issues, executive order fourteen, one, oh, nine, President Trump prohibits K through twelve schools from teaching content. Related to gender ideology, ideology or critical race theory. So it's pretty clear that a piece of our transgender policy that dealt with IMV has already been dealt with by the, uh. By this administration. So the only thing I think in the original policy that. Was not addressed was the name, it was name and gender changes on official records. Um. But I'm not near as. Worried about those items as, as some of the others in that gender policy, so I think. Pretty much all the material issues have already been addressed, um, by either state statute or by federal regulations, so. Pretty pleased that's all. Uh, so at least, uh. At least for what we were trying to accomplish earlier. Any other discussion? On EJ? Here we go, and move on to. Discussion B, consideration of becoming an education service provider ESP. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So you may, I, I had a couple of superintendents reports, I, I've mentioned the education savings account. AKA that Steve, as part of the steamboat legacy act that passed the state legislatures have session. Um, the way that program works is. Uh. The state allocates money, seven thousand dollars per child, not from the school foundation account, but from another account, so it's not affecting both school funding. Uh, seven thousand dollars for homeschool or private school student, reach a role student in the program. Um, and those parents who enroll in the program, their accounts are credited for seven thousand, seven thousand dollars per year. That's distributed on a quarterly basis. For the parents and kids in the program. Once the parents are in the program, they are able to go online to a website that's run by a company called Odyssey and they select from a menu of services. Which services they want for their child. And then there's a cost associated with each of those services, so they're basically ordering what they can. The money from the education savings account program doesn't go directly to the parents, it's paid to the education service provider. Who's providing the services. Now, public school districts are eligible to become education service providers or ESP, something with statute. Uh, this memo, after a lot of discussion with the state, with other superintendents and with our admin team. This memo is recommending that Fremont one. Hold off on becoming an education service provider, at least until we have more. Information and experience with how this works in practice with other school districts. Uh, the memo kind of outlined some of the concerns. Uh, some of the information that we have not yet been able to answer, the questions that we have on the state, they did ask, they did issue a. Uh, four question FAQ, uh, I think yesterday or perhaps Friday, I can't remember which day I saw it. Uh, but we still have a lot of questions about state reporting, grading, discipline, attendance. If we are an education service provider, how do we handle those major issues if a student is coming to go to our classes? But it's not an enrolled student in the school district. Uh, the financial piece is another consideration. The state guidance is that districts would need to, if they're going to be an education service provider, that enter into contracts. Um, negotiation is what the, the FAQ said earlier a couple of days ago. So contract with parents for these services and then, and figure out on the back end how to get the money from Odyssey. Uh, so there's just a lot of confusion on how much that would be, what are the reporting departments, what is the process? Uh, our feeling is that it may not be insurmountable, but it is, it'd be. Darn near insurmountable to have ready to go. For this fall. Um, so our approach would be to wait and see. Um, and then reevaluate the decision further down the road as we get more and more from WD and other districts who are involved. And as of right now, I was only able to identify two districts in Wyoming. That are considering becoming an education service provider. One has a pretty robust three K program and there's, you know, a different set of funding in apartments for preschool. And then another one operates in online school, um, so they're used to doing virtual arrangements with, with students and things like that, so. A little more unconventional than what we've had here in Fremont, so. Wanted to put that out there and then just hear your thoughts as board members on, on that recommendation and any other questions that you'd like me to answer or gather along.
Any thoughts on? Becoming ESP? But I'm yet. Seems like, I mean, if, even if we wanted to do this, we have what, two months to get it in place before we've actually moved to start the program. So much time.
And Mr. Chair, I would add too that, uh, Mr. Sweeney contacted the state for information on how to become ESP. Uh, a couple of months ago and we still aren't waiting. We, we've gotten response, a link to the Odyssey website, but. Were able to answer any questions on topics that I, that I brought up recently.
Definitely. Let someone else be on the bleeding edge of this one, though.
Well.
Taylor, Ily?
Mr. Chair. Oh. I had just thought that the original or the. I had just thought that the original or the enrolled act fifty-two stated that. You know, the the Steamboat Legacy funds could be used for any non-governmental entity school. It's like, doesn't seem like we fit that definition in any way, so I was really surprised to see this. Um. You know, on the agenda last week. Uh, because I thought that. We are. A governmental entity, any.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Drew, that is, that is part of the discussion that's happening around the state and I think there's some confusion among districts as to whether the state's guidance and interpretation of this. Of this statute is is really what a court would uphold, so there's. Like a couple of different bills that come out every year, uh, some question about what it actually means in practice. Right now, they're saying districts are eligible to become E S Ps, not many are biding, so we'll see how it plays out, I suppose.
Anything else on this one?
Taylor? Maybe raise your hand?
Oh, Taylor?
Yeah, I did, thank you. I I agree, let's hold off. There's so many unknowns and like everyone's reiterated, there's the practical, you know, it there. Is this trickle-down effect when we have legislation like this put in of how it's being implemented, who's going to oversee it? Um. You know, I I just think there's too many. Uh, I support our homeschool community, um, and I'm happy for them with this, but I think we should wait on getting involved with it just to make sure we have some more. Understanding of the requirements for testing and um, you know, credits and all of that stuff. It seems to be a lot of confusion and unknowns.
Great, thanks. Okay, let's move on to salary and comp targets. Um, I I have a suggestion. Scott was the one that originally brought this up. If he was sort of driving this, he's not here tonight. There, would it be a problem we tabled this until next time?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I don't think so. We're prepared to steep on it, but it's Scott was the one who thought of seeing, I'm fine with it.
And we had talked about Mr. Sweeney being here too.
Oh, that's right, yeah. Is everyone with everyone? We tabled that one? Okay. All right, so we'll table that till next time. All right, upcoming events and reminders. June twenty-fourth. The public hearing for proposed intent to amend rules for employees who conceal, carry firearms. Six P M here. Keep in mind that um this will be a listening session only. There will be very little more actual, well, there'll be no more of this takes place other than. Other than listening session. July fifteenth, the budget hearing starts at six, which is a statutory required budget hearing, and then the regular meeting will follow that immediately. The budget hearings usually don't take much time at all. Uh, and then July twenty-ninth, there will be a special board meeting to consider taking action to amend the rules and regulations. Through the concealed carrier firearms at six P M. Um, that basically is the uh. Follow-up from June twenty-fourth, and that was the statutory, statutory required forty-five day. Uh, period that we needed to wait from time that those rules were published. So that's why we have a little bit of a weird date on that one. But. Kind of is what it is, so. And with that, we are adjourned. We're invited, everyone. Good sir.
Three thirty? Step early. What do you do? Lay away for ourselves?
You know, I I I.